Mission of the COVID-19 virus. We have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's orders suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all public, to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. The meeting will feature, this meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Menden Select Board is convening by telephone conference as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Take it away, Mark.
Laura?
Yay! I made it. Can you hear me now, Mike?
I can.
Yay!
Thanks. Okay, we're starting the meeting, so if you're not, if you're not speaking, if you mind mute yourself so that we don't hear any echoing or background noise. And just a reminder, we are remote participation, so we will be taking all votes via roll call. First item is citizen statements and petitions. Do we have any here? No? Okay. Correspondents to the board, consider Lions Club request for a toll road September, Saturday, May 15th from 8:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m.
So I move to approve the Lions request for a toll road on Saturday, May 15th from 8:30 a.m. to 12 o'clock p.m. at the corner of Route 16 and North Avenue.
Second.
Okay, this is a pretty typical request. Any discussion? All in favor?
Mark, I.
Kenny, oh, hi.
Real high. Okay, consider signing the Menden Permanent Firefighters Local 4936 IAAF Union Contract.
So I, I move to sign the Menden Permanent Firefighter Local 4936 IAAF Union Contract Beginning July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2024.
Second.
Very good. Does Chief Kessler want to speak to this or Ms. Newman?
Oh yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Town Council and I had a few meetings with the union. We were able to quickly move through the various proposals. Both sides worked very well together to come up with something that I think we were both able to accomplish a little bit of what we were looking to accomplish for, and it was a very fair agreement. So I am in support of the board supporting this as well.
Very good. I will say that the process went very smoothly, and I greatly appreciate the efforts of both the Fire Chief, Chief Kessler, as well as the members of the union and the board, as well as Ms. Newman for all the hard work in this process. Usually, things don't go quite as smoothly as it has this time, and I think everyone is appreciative of that, including the residents of Menden. Thank you so much for that. Any further comments?
Just a reminder that I have the actual documents here for you guys to sign, and they will be in the door whenever you swing through.
Hey, all in favor?
Mark, I.
Kenny, oh, hi.
Real high. Thank you very much. Okay, discuss ATM warrant. Hand it off to Ms. Newman.
Hold on, I'm just got multiple screens happening right here. So we've put this art, we've put this item back on the warrant because there was some discussion last week at the FinCom about potentially, they were saying pass over articles, but since they are board articles, we needed to talk a little bit tonight about what that meant in terms of recommended funding sources or not, since the board had already supported putting these articles forward. And so they are here tonight so that we can continue that discussion.
Yeah, and at this point, I'll, I'll call the FinCom meeting to order. I know we have, we have at least four, so we have a quorum. Rather than rehashing everything we talked about last week, just to go right to the articles that, that we were not ready to support. I mean, I don't know, do you, if you want to talk about the override question for us, which is Article 15, or if you want to talk about the other ones?
Well, the override is, so me or you, Mark, it's the same. So the override, the board voted on yesterday to fund, to put forward the override amount at the same amount that they had agreed to, that we've had budgeted since early February. That number hasn't changed. The board has previously put forward a budget and recommended with a number, and they're aware of what the school is recommending. So we weren't surprised that there was no change yesterday, and...
Have a different, let me grab a piece of paper with the numbers.
803-338. And that was voted on yesterday. And so that will go to ballot, and that will be voted on second week of May. In town meeting.
I'm just, I'm just editing the, the article, so it would be to see if the town will, to will vote to raise and appropriate, and it would be $803,338 dollars for the purpose of additional funding for the operational budget of the Menden Upper Regional School District for the fiscal year starting July 1st, 2021. Right? Is that what, is that correct?
I, I think so. Laura, is that the motion from last night?
Yes, and I, I'll send it to Mike as well. I'll send it over to...
Yeah, at this point, it's just as long as the dollar value is correct, so that we can, so we can take that.
Cindy has something.
I just didn't hear the dollar amount. Could you just repeat it? Thank you.
According to, for your information, according to the assessor, the principal assessor, it would raise the tax rate of the assessed value seventy, seventy-seven cents per thousand of, of value. So a $450,000 assessed house would go up around $350 per, per year on their property tax.
Okay. Jean Davern has her hand up? You're muted though, Jean, so we can't hear you. Okay.
Let me send her a quick text.
Jean Davern, you're muted, so we didn't hear you.
What's that? Can you hear me now? I just wanted you to repeat the number for the override, but I got it.
Okay, great. All right, Mike, next one.
Yes. All right, the next one was Article 17. And this was $60,000 transfer from free cash, or the lesser sum, if it didn't cost that much, to buy a plow truck for the highway department so that they could turn the current plow truck to the fire department and retire the fire department's truck. And I know that's not really the board, it's just that I was...
Okay. That was not supported by the finance committee. Is that correct?
No, Mike's muted. What the hell's going on?
You're not muted.
Yeah, but Mike is now. I know that.
All right, Kim?
You're not muted.
Okay. Make sure if you're going to speak that you're unmuted.
Everybody's getting muted.
Everyone seemingly not realizing that. Everyone should be, everyone should be muted until you're ready to speak. So if you're not speaking, mute yourself, and then when you're ready to speak, unmute.
Then I, I can't take minutes.
No, you're not, you're mute, when you mute, you, we just can't hear you.
I was gonna clean it.
In here. This isn't a new concept, folks.
Yeah, I'm listening.
Mark, I think you have the ability to mute everyone, right, Lonnie? Doesn't he have the poss, the option to mute everyone and then unmute when they're speaking?
I don't know why it muted me. I have to, it's a long story, but I had to call in, and it said that I was muted. I actually had to hang up and call back in again on a phone line to get it to work, but the thing I can hear. So again, it was $60,000 for the truck. So I just wanted the, I wanted the highway, the surveyor and/or the fire chief to take another vote and see if we were going to approve this or recommend it.
So just as a reminder, the board has put the article on to move forward. The FinCom recommends or not recommends the funding source for the article, not whether or not the article moves forward to town meeting.
Well, I, I understand that, and it's like we were talking about the other day. That would mean that that particular article, rather than me reading the, making the motions, right?
The, the board would make the motion.
We'll figure it out. I just, it would be much cleaner if we could just get the board and the FinCom on the same page, and I wanted, and obviously, and again, Allen, very special.
Well, it's gonna be 40 tonight.
Okay, so I'm here too. Can you hear me?
Can we, can we please mute all the other, I can, yes.
All right, so I'm here.
Allen is up.
Okay, sorry. Believe it or not, I know how to do this. I think. So, so the, so the issue is that the fire department is looking to upgrade their truck. They do not put a lot of miles on their truck, whereas the highway department does, and we're a little more aggressive in the use of our trucks. So our trucks don't last as long. So by doing this, we have a 2015 truck that we put a utility bed on, and when we did that, we kept the old bed, which is still brand new from 2015 out back. So by doing this, the, the fire chief will get, the 2015 will take the utility bed off of that, put the pickup bag back on, which that's what he wants, and then when the highway department replaces that truck, because we do need that, we, alls we have to buy is a cab and a chassis, so it's cheaper. It's just, I think it's the best way to go. There's certainly, you know, it's just, we can buy a cheaper truck. I don't know if the chief has anything else to say about that, but that's basically that in a nutshell. We get a brand new pickup truck bed from 2015 sitting out back in the weeds. We might as well use it.
Okay. Chief Kessler?
Yeah, so I'll take the blame for starting this, I guess. Last year, when we had our vehicle inspections done, the inspector came to me and said that pickup truck is, may fail next time because it's got so much rust in it. We also have a couple of mechanical issues. So what I did is I brought it to a, to a mechanic, and I got an estimate, it'd be a little bit above $2,500 for replacing the doors and taking care of the mechanical work. In addition to that, the bed in the back is soft when you, when you're up on it, when you walk on it, which indicates it's rusting out. This is a 2001 Ford F-350 pickup. I had a similar issue, almost identical, rusting doors, side panels, some mechanical things, and a rusting bed over in Uxbridge on a 2006. And it cost me $5,000 to replace the bed. That was the purchase of a bed and then having Blackstone Valley Tech actually do the work. So it was cheaper that way, but still, so I'd be looking at $5,000 for a bed and $2,500 or more to do the fixing, to get the truck to pass inspection for a 2001, a 20-year-old truck. So I approached, and I was personally having trouble of going to the town and saying, hey, I need to buy a $50,000 or $60,000 pickup truck for the use that we have, which is plowing a lot, which is picking up hose after incidents, trailering the light tower to where the light tower is needed, whether it be a, a fire incident, police incident, or, or a town event. We have trailers, one of the trailers, a hazmat trailer, that if we do get rid of the rescue truck, we would be utilizing for our booms and, and hazardous material control items. So I approached Allen and asked if he had a gas pickup, because a diesel pickup that doesn't run a whole lot would cause us trouble. And he said he had this one, at that time it was a 2015 or 16. So I broached the subject with him about it may be appropriate to do this move as Allen just described, and let them get the brand new pickup, which they would put much more use to it. So, you know, as Allen said, it really was a way to try and save the town money. He's gonna have to replace that pickup at some point, but with it only being five years old, we can probably get upwards of 15 years out of it at the fire department, as opposed to having to replace the fire department pickup within a year or two, or putting a lot of money into it, and then having to replace Allen's pickup in the next three to five years.
Okay. So the finance committee voted against this, this move. Is that correct?
We did not, we didn't, right, at that point, they had not approved. What I would ask is, are there any of the members of the FinCom that want to ask any more questions before we revoke this Article 17?
Yeah, this is Nick. How many miles are on the existing pickup truck that's at the highway department? And is the fire pickup truck garaged inside?
I believe the pickup truck at the highway department now currently has 30,000 plus miles. I can run out and look with that. I believe that's what it has. I could be wrong. It's right in the garage. I'm at the highway department now, 32 seconds to run out there.
And the fire pickup truck is not housed in the garage unless it's a snowstorm happening, then we put it in just for keeping it clear.
And you said it would cost, did I say, was it $7,500 to replace the rust in the bed and make it so it will pass inspection?
Yeah, I mean, I, so just, I was told that it may be failing inspection this year, so I can't guarantee that it's gonna fail. It's gonna be up to the inspector. But in order to repair the items that the inspector told me last summer, and the mechanical work is, is in the area of $2,500 or a little bit more. From my experience, when I had to replace a bed in my previous job, it costs us, it was $5,000 or a little bit more having DVT do the work. It was somewhere around $3,000 to purchase the bed, and then the work for, the material and that for BVT to do the work.
And again, that's no guarantee to pass inspection, if you're just assuming that
Yeah, I mean, typically, the inspectors kind of look at you and say, hey, I passed it this year, but you got a lot of rust there. And so they're not telling you, they, they can't tell you that they really shouldn't have passed it. They're just kind of giving you that wink, saying, we passed it this year, but I'm just letting you know.
Okay, if, if no one on the FinCom has any other questions, I'd like to take a motion to support Article 17, if somebody's willing to do so.
With funding source, please.
With funding source, right. As it's, well, just so you can see, Article 17 is written, which is from free cash, a sum of $60,000 to purchase or lease the truck with the plow up the highway department. So is anybody on the FinCom willing to make that motion?
This is Jack, I assume.
So I have a second from the FinCom. Going once?
I'll second that one.
Okay, Norm round second, so we have motion made and seconded. All those in favor, please, with a roll call.
Jack, aye.
Norm, aye.
Nick, aye.
So we've got Mike and Heather left. Jean, is Mike and Andrea there with you? Okay, you're muted. Jean, you're muted. Is Mike a yea or a nay?
He's a yea.
Okay, that's a yea. And then is Heather on the call or not? All right, well, all right, thank you. So, so that one's supported. Now, Jean, can you unmute yourself and just tell me, did we support 18, which was the $40,000 for the radios or not? I can't hear you though, Jean, so you have to un, if you can, you have to unmute yourself.
I believe we did, Mike, but it's Nick, I believe so.
Just, I want to be sure. Okay, yes, four, okay. Now, Article 19, and I know, I know we did not support that one because the question was town hall painting and lot improvements. And we asked about quotes, there were no written quotes, and then there were questions about besides the painting, there was also the possibility we're gonna have to relocate the Artesian well. And there just wasn't any written documentation, and I just want to know if that's changed and rediscussed that again so we can decide if we're gonna support it or not. So Kim, can you just give us another recap, please?
Sure. So we have received a verbal quote for the painting of the town hall as is, within the range of $100,000 to $125,000, based on assuming the condition of the town hall is, let's assume, A-plus condition. There are other options potentially that would, this would be the lowest possible cost to pursue this painting within the timeline that we have set within this campus and all the other projects we have going on. Other alternatives, which would involve, you know, more detailed analysis of the site, including an external assessment, would cost as much as $30,000 just to do an analysis of the current condition of the town hall. The town has not shown any interest in the previous couple of years in pursuing a larger project in full restoration of the town hall. So this simply would be painting, scraping and painting of the town hall and staying within the guidelines of the conservation restriction that is on the building and the campus because of its historic preservation.
Now, what about the other issue about lot improvements?
Well, the lot improvements are really secondary, depending on what the state decides upon where the, the well can be located. That is undetermined until they decide whether or not we are allowed to actually put the well at the back part of the lot. There are a number of moving pieces on this campus that everyone is aware of, you know, the funding of the police station, the regionalization of dispatch, the, we were awarded the MVP grant that we would have received last year in order to do the back part of the lot, the reallocation of the funding for the Inman Hill property towards the campus project. There are a number of moving pieces, and one of those, of course, is this well. And if we are going to do site improvements potentially quickly for the well, there may be some costs that are related to that that could be included with this article if there is excess funds available, if the painting quote comes in below $100,000 and $125,000. That being said, I mean, that's just basically based upon the timeline, which would be somewhere between May of this year and the fall. That would be, this is funding for work that would be done in that timeframe.
And maybe I missed it, but why is it that there's no written quote?
There's no written quotes because we're not going out to RFP until we have a status of what we're actually going to do with the building. So we will go to RFP. We've compared multiple towns and their written RFPs already in what the approximations are with similar structures. I spent a, I don't know, a good hour on the phone today with McGillican Kelso, which is one of the premier architect firms in the state of Massachusetts for historic restorations. The, the building itself and the quotes for the work that it get done could be anywhere from $50,000 to $500,000 based upon the condition of the actual structure. But we aren't actually doing that because we're not doing a full analysis of the structure. We are simply moving forward with just painting, and that is what we want to do at this point, not full rehabilitation.
So again, just to repeat what, what was discussed, if the only thing we're doing is painting, why don't we have any written quotes for painting? So we have something in hand that says that's what it's gonna cost.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't have solicited for written quotes at this point without doing a conditions assessment. And again, we wouldn't have known the timeframe in which we, we have been planning on going to put this paint project on since last May when we didn't receive the MVP grant.
So in other words, you're gonna have to do this analysis of the condition anyways before you ask for a...
We don't have to. We could do one that could simply be a $2,500 paint assessment, which would tell us what the original paint was on the structure, and then operate off of that. Or we could go, which I would just, I mean, other communities that have maybe deeper pockets are doing much more thorough analysis of their structures and then doing multimillion-dollar projects and restoration towards their town halls. That's not what we're trying to do here. Sadly.
Okay. Based on her further explanation, does anybody want to make a motion to change our recommendation to pass over this article?
Mr. Chairman, this is Jack. May I just ask that question? Kim, I, I think there was, I can speak for the whole group, but my recollection is that there was overwhelming support to see that the building is cared for, right? I think the only question was really, I think, one of the other, besides the one the chairman raised, was a question as to whether or not the, it would be permissible to look at an alternative to the paint as well. That is, if that's even in the cards, the idea being that if the building, if the, if the clapboards are in that rough a shape, perhaps they won't even accept paint, or if they accept paint, they accept it for two years and then we're back here. And I think that was just a question that I, among other members of the committee, had, if there's an alternative available within the bounds of the law that would permit the town to explore, whether or not a Hardy board, for example, could be used on the structure?
And what I, what I would say is that the Historic District Commission and working with the guidelines from the Secretary of the Interior, I mean, they may be able to give you a little bit more guidance about the materials that they would recommend that we use for the town hall. I mean, that's really within their purview. Certainly, before we are authorized to use any paint selections or choices or materials, they have to get approved through a thorough process that goes through the, the state, the National Secretary of the Interior and State Mass Historic. So other possibilities could be brought forward, but ultimately, it would be based upon recommendations from those groups.
Great. So if that's, if that's at least along the menu of considerations, I'll make a motion to support this, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second to support it? Going once?
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Well, we do have an open spot, but I think you have a conflict, so.
Chairman Marali, can I make a comment?
Absolutely, please do.
Before you take a vote. I just want to point out that, you know, I understand the concerns about which materials may be used and which may be most cost effective for the future. I think it's, you run into a, into a brick wall sometimes when you're dealing with these structures. Have experience with that at Daniel's Farm in Blackstone, where I'm on the board for. Many times, we're spending a lot more money on things that normally at your own homes, you wouldn't have to spend money on. And it is frustrating, but it is an important thing for preserving historic buildings. And I think that we all recognize that the town hall is in dire need of paint at the, at the baseline. So I appreciate the Finance Committee supporting this article.
This is Nick. I just had a question around if the cost were to go, say, up to, say, you know, three hundred thousand dollars, how would we handle any overruns above what was requested tonight?
So what happens here is that the FinCom recommends or does not recommend a funding source, okay? And assuming that you recommend a funding source and it's free cash, that money gets set aside into a special capital account that is, can only be used specifically for the words that are within the article. So that would be town hall painting or lot improvement, okay? And so assuming that it came in higher and we found out, I mean catastrophically, that the building needed drastic repair to wood or whatnot, what we would then do, and let's assume some of that is restoration work, and they may also qualify then for CPA funds, we would keep the money in that account. It doesn't, can't be spent on anything else. It stays there. And then we come back and we ask for whatever combination at another town meeting from another funding source to make up that divide.
I, I guess, this is Nick, and it is, I'll just reiterate what I said at the last FinCom meeting, is that the, the idea of, I, I think we all agree that the building needs to be painted. There's no question of that. I, I just have a kind of the, the question of the lot improvements kind of tied into this and not having those be separate items. They do seem to be, to be apples and oranges. We're talking about a well and then the painting of the building. So that means that if that money's earmarked, basically, any lot improvement, anything that we deem that we want to do in the town hall complex could be funded out of that.
Well, we can also edit the motion on the floor. It just has to ask Jay, he's on the call, has to stay within the intent of what was written on the article. And so we can remove the lot improvement piece if that's really of concern.
It's of concern of mine.
Yeah.
I, I may not speak for the group.
So do we need, I, I don't think we need to, to amend it on the floor. I, I mean, we can, we can just make the motion to, you know, transfer a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for free cash to fund town hall painting or anything in relation there too, can't we?
I don't know, Cindy just had her hand up.
I'm sorry.
I can't see Cindy. Go ahead.
Anything that is within the scope of the article that is more narrow than the scope, you can vote to do. So, sitting here listening to what you're saying, that seems to be a narrowing of the scope and not expanding. As long as you don't make what you're looking at broader than what the warrant says, you should be okay.
So is it fair to say that the motion, well, why don't one of you make the motion you want, which I'm, if, if you're saying this, it would be to see if the town hall will vote to transfer from free cash a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to fund town hall painting or take any other action in relation there too? Is that the motion that you wanted to make, Nick?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the motion. Do we have a second?
You can't, in concept, it's fine, but you can't actually do that here, right? So all you really are voting are whether or not you support with a funding source, what's on there now, right? So you can certainly make a note that you will support it when you get there with these amendments. That's fine. But making the motion now doesn't change the article. I think everyone understands that.
I believe there's a motion on the floor now, so that motion has to be retracted if you're going to change it at all.
I, I would draw the motion. Mr. Chairman, this is Jack.
Okay.
Okay. So what you're, what you're saying, go ahead, Cindy.
I was gonna say, you can, you can vote what you would accept, but it doesn't make any difference if the motion is made on town meeting floor. You need to make a motion on town meeting floor that is within the scope of the article if your recommendation is to support something more narrow than what the article said.
So in other words, if, if the, if the Select Board was in, was in agreement with appropriating this money at this point, just deal with the paint, the painting of the town hall. We supported that, and we could make that motion that night without any amendments or anything. Is that correct?
You would probably need to have some meeting to make a motion of the board that the board voted to make the motion.
Well, that's what we're, that's, we're having a joint meeting right now. This is what I'm trying.
You can do it now. You can also do it at a FinCom meeting before town meetings start.
So my question is that.
Hold on here for one second.
Go ahead, Lonnie.
Yeah, I, I think we're, we're making this way too difficult here. This is no different than any other town meeting that we prepared for. If you want to vote to put the, the funding for the, the hundred and twenty-five for paint, voted for the pay. And the motion on the floor just needs to read the same thing. That's all.
Correct. That's exactly what I'm saying. So is it, so right now, there's a, we're, we're, there's a motion and sec- made and seconded to support the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to paint the town hall. Any, can I have a vote to support that? All those in favor, roll call. Please say aye.
Jack, aye.
Nick, aye.
Norm, aye.
Mike and Amanda Leah, nay.
Okay. So it's three to one in support, so we'll support it for the paint. So that's, that's Article?
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
Right.
And I think those are the only ones that we had issues with, with the articles on the warrant, right?
Right, correct. But you also didn't vote on the budget.
Yes, we got to do that now, right? But one step at a time.
Article four.
Question. Yeah. I see it just a little bit late, and I apologize. Where are we with the trackless machine and the?
We're just about to get to that, Alan.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. So now, if we move to the budget, Gene, and you, you keep me honest on this. The issues that we had with the budget had to do with the highway surveyors budget and the trucks. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so we're in, we're in a, a agreement with all the rest of the budget, as was discussed on the, the March thirty-first iteration of the budget that, let me. I think that's what I'm sharing right now.
Yep.
This is the road machinery. Is that correct? Kim, four twenty-one?
Hold on. The funding for this is in highway construction and maintenance, four twenty-two.
Okay. Expenses?
Yes.
Okay. So the, there, there were, there were two issues here, as I recall. One of them is a plow truck. And the other one is a combination, snow, sidewalk, sidewalk, snow removal, and also a brush hog to actually clear brush back from the side of the road. Is that correct?
Correct.
And we're going to do this by, by an eight-year lease?
Correct.
And what's the breakdown, Alan? How much of it is for the plow truck and how much is it for the brush hog sidewalk snow removal piece?
They're both, I mean, oh, hang on one second. Oh, my goodness gracious. Okay, so the truck is one eighty-eight, oh seventy-two, and the trackless mower, sidewalk, sweeper, it does a bunch of stuff, is one eighty-one, eight.
And I had forwarded the FinCom the lease term agreement paperwork a few weeks ago for our meeting, two weeks ago.
So what is this eighty-one-five cover? First year lease of the two vehicles?
It's, I don't believe it's eighty-one. I think it's.
It's fifty-two thousand dollars by, I think it's fifty-two-five is the payment for the first year of the lease for the two vehicles.
So are we going to change this? So the two twenty-one, six fifty encompasses those two items? I'm trying to break it down. I can't blow it up anymore.
Let me tap in here. There's, in addition to the, the ink, that eighty-one thousand is not solely related to this lease. When we reviewed the Highway Department budget, there were a couple of increases. Fifty-six thousand, five hundred dollars is what is currently budgeted in capital equipment replacement. And then there is another, should be, I'm going to guess twenty-five, there is twenty-five thousand, which is fifteen thousand for road materials and ten thousand for hired equipment. That's the eighty-one.
Hey, Alan, can you just explain, because the question was, we couldn't get you on the call before.
Yeah.
What had to do with the, with this snow removal and brush, brush hog piece of equipment and if it was really necessary to replace it.
Okay, so currently, we have no equipment to do the sidewalks. We got a, a small hand snow blower, which is ridiculous. And at one point, Kevin Meehan had given us a snow blower that he got from Minnesota, which, it, it's junk. It was painted, it looked beautiful. I call it, I call it a pig with a new dress. It, it was, it was junk. So we, we spent like eight thousand dollars trying to get it to snow blow the sidewalks. And I just, you know, every time it went out and it broke down, so not only did I lose the person driving it, I lost the mechanic and another person going to retrieve this machine. So since then, I, I parked it, it's, 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 it's outlived its usefulness. So along with doing the sidewalks, this machine, it's going to replace a nineteen eighty-four, or I think it's eighty-four tractor. It's just, again, an outlet that's useful in it. It's just, how many years can I get out of this equipment? Every time you go out, it breaks down. We, we, you know, we're, we're a small department. We have a lot of stuff to do in a small period of time, especially the mowing of the brush. When it, you know, it's just, it's time. And I've been asking for both of these pieces of equipment, one of them for at least three years, in a sidewalk machine. I think twenty years I've been asking for a sidewalk machine. It's time. It's, it's time. Mendon is the only town that does not have a decent sidewalk machine. Utsbridge has got like three. Milford's got like five. Hopedale's got three. We got nothing. It's, it's crazy.
And if I can just.
For years, you know, we've been trying to do it with the snow plows and the trucks, but you're beating the crap out of the trucks following these sidewalks because they're not made to do it. You need the right equipment to do the right job.
And if I can just add in there, there was a question last week about if we can make the townspeople remove the, the snow in front of their, their homes. And not.
Write the bylaw.
But just, but, but, well, here's, that, that, that's the applicable point. Up until a few years ago, there was a delineation between natural accumulation of snow and snow that was actually placed there. If, if the snow was placed there, whoever placed the snow there was responsible. And in order for us to change any of that, we, number one, we would have to write a bylaw and pass a bylaw as a town. But what's more important to understand is if the town plows the road and in plowing the road, the snow gets thrown onto the sidewalk, then the town is responsible for putting that snow on the sidewalk for anyone who may be put in danger from that snow. So if we don't have some kind of bylaw that says that the townspeople have to remove the si- the snow from the sidewalk in front of their house, we as a town are responsible. And I would argue that this particular piece of equipment that would, can be, can, you know, be used to clean brush off the side of the road during the summer and then also remove the snow from the sidewalk, you know, in the wintertime, is, you know, it isn't just a nice to have, it's something that's required. So, so based on that, what I'd like to do is, are there any other questions or anything that would stop any of you from supporting that part of the budget as it's written?
Just a question. In the twenty-five years that I've lived in Mendon, my sidewalk has never been cleared. So is the intent that, once we have this purchase of equipment, that all the sidewalks in Mendon be cleared during snow?
Probably not. Probably all we would do is the main downtown, North Ave and Route sixteen, the, the main sidewalks. Will you live in a subdivision?
I do, yeah.
Which one?
Old Southwoods.
Okay. I got to be honest with you. I drive the streets every single day. Basically, the people in, especially Vincent Road and them, they walk in the road. They don't even walk on the sidewalks, even in the summer.
Well, I, I guess to my point, my point is that if we're saying that, you know, by statute that we have to clear the sidewalks and we're not clearing sidewalks for all residents, we're only clearing the sidewalks for some of the residents.
Yeah.
Are we setting ourselves up as a town for saying, hey, you know, if, if you live on these roads, you get your sidewalks cleared. If you live on these roads, you don't, even though by ordinance, we're supposed to. I, I'm just posing the question.
Right, you know, that's fine. And as Mike said, them, them sidewalks over there, we don't push the snow on them because there's a grass strip in between. I mean, possibly, again, it's a, it's a, it's a time thing. We're, we're a small department.
I, I, I'm not suggesting that my, my neighborhood sidewalks need to be cleared by any means. And there isn't, and there isn't, in my development, there is not a grass strip between the road and the sidewalk. The sidewalk goes right to the road. And I'm not suggesting that it needs to be by any means. I'm just posing the question. If we have this now, will we start to get more requests? Because this is going to be out there, that this is something that, that we're doing for part of the town and not all of the town.
If we have time, I will do them. That's all I can tell you.
All right. So, Mr. Chairman Marali?
Yeah.
Um, I think we have, Selectman Burke has his hand up.
Yeah, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. I, um, I know that the FinCom has to vote on the budget, but, um, you know, this is a budget discussion, and we have other business than the budget hearings coming on in ten minutes. Um, you know, we could, I, the, the FinCom could recommend to pass this budget as is, or they can pass it by holding those line items and then re-vote that. I'm just trying to make a recommendation to move this on, so we're not going back and forth on chat about this.
I, I agree, Chris. That's what I was about to do. What I'd like to do is I would, I'm, I'm asking for, at this point, for a motion and a second, um, and then a roll call to approve the budget as is written and as we have, um, as we've already reviewed previously, um, as is what's, I, I believe it's, it's, uh, it's shared, and if it's not up there, let me just bring it up there again. So, I'd like a motion to, uh, approve the budget as written.
So-
Jack, second.
Who made the motion?
Nick.
Nick made the motion. Jack seconded it, I think. Is that correct?
Yes, Jack seconded.
All right. So the other, the other members, um, Norm Round, yea or nay?
Norm, aye.
Aye. Uh, Micah Mandalia? I think Jean, you're, you're mic muted. I can't hear him.
Nay.
Micah Mandalia said nay.
Okay. So we have three approving, one dissenting. Um, it's not a tie, so I don't need to vote. So at this point, um, we're gonna recommend the budget, so we can do our hearing at seven. Um, I guess my question is, do we, can we stay on this call, or do I need to, and this might be a, a question for Laura, can I log off of this and then open up, is, is there a second, is there a separate link for the, uh, for the hearing, or can we continue it on this?
I hope there's a separate link, because our meeting is gonna continue with some other business.
Yeah.
Mike, this is Laura. You, I believe you had a second link set up before, and then I thought Ellen said you canceled it and joined our link.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I did. And under the, because the idea is at seven o'clock, I would either open the hearing and then, um, just continue it, wait until your meeting is done, and then go ahead and reopen the hearing and do it.
Okay. Uh, let me get you a link and I'll email it to you, and you guys can do that.
The problem with that, the problem with that is it has to be posted. We can't do that.
No, yeah, yeah, hold, hold on, just stop for a sec. So we're not gonna give another link. They're just gonna open the hearing and, and, and pause it while we finish the business, and they're just gonna continue in this meeting.
Exactly. Perfect.
All right. So, this is what we're gonna do. So right now, uh, Mike, you're done for the moment, right?
Correct, sir.
Okay, thank you. So-
Take my hand out.
If you don't mind, I'm just unsharing your screen.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Just, it's easier for me to see everyone. Okay, so let's, um, finish up with our- We have meeting minutes, we wanna take care of that.
Um, do you wanna do, um, number seven, um, Mark, the seasonal license renewal?
Yeah. Go ahead and do that. Thank you. I didn't have it in front of me.
Um, I move to approve the twenty-twenty-one seasonal license renewal of a common vehicle license in entertainment on Sunday for the member driving range thirty-seven, Easton Street.
Ma- Mark, can you step down and second that? I'm gonna abstain.
Sure, step down and second. All in favor?
Burke, aye.
Real aye.
Tino, abstain.
Okay. Very good. Um, consider meeting minutes three sixteen, twenty-one, and three nine, twenty-nine, twenty-one?
I move to approve the meeting minutes of three sixteen, twenty-one, and three twenty-nine, twenty-one.
Second.
All in favor?
Burke, aye.
Tino, aye.
Real aye. All right. And then we have discussed Memorial Day Parade. So, the question is whether or not we can have the parade at all?
I've got, I've put a question out, uh, to find out if we're, how, how, what the feeling is, the governor's office on that.
Okay.
Can we, can we maybe do, just discuss it at the next meeting, because I just put the question out there yesterday. So, um, like I said, I'll be somebody, sure, somebody emailed earlier, as far as I'm concerned, have it, but we're gonna get yelled at for it.
Yeah, we don't.
Well, I mean, we just, you can certainly have a car parade like a birthday, but we can't organize, we can't encourage people to gather, that's all.
So we'll wait for-
We're seeing a baseball game.
We'll wait for Selectman Tino to receive a response, have a better idea at the next meeting. Consider Friends of Mendon elders request for, uh, progressive yard sale?
I move to approve the townwide progressive yard sale on some, uh, Saturday, June twelfth, with a rain date of Sunday, June thirteenth, and a waiver of the yard sale permit fee.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Burke, aye.
Tino, aye.
Real aye. Okay, good. So we've got our meeting agenda accomplished. Um, are there any, there's no vote that we need to take at the public hearing, correct, Mr. Chairman Marali?
That is correct. You don't need to vote. It's just, all we're doing is, we've already taken a vote, so all we're gonna do now is, um, just, just have a hearing of the budget, um, as I shared with everybody.
All right. So what I'd like to do then is adjourn the, the board, the select board meeting, and then we'll, whoever's staying on the, for the public hearing can stay on here for the FinCom.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Burke, aye.
Tino, aye.
Real aye. I've done that before, Lonnie. I've caught, I've said Schofield or whatever, it's. All right.
Actually, you have, I, I do want to have-
Your meeting now.
You have one question about, uh, I know at one point we talked about the moderator salary and putting it back to a hundred dollars because Jay wasn't running anymore. Was that, I mean, it's only a hundred bucks, but did, did that, did that get done or not?
I did it last year.
Okay, all right. So right now, it shows salary zero, expenses a hundred bucks. Um, but it should be salary a hundred bucks, right?
It's, should, it should be, it should be within the line for salaries.
Oh, on the, uh, on, in elected officials?
Yes.
So the, so the line item in the budget is wrong when it has salary zeroed out?
Well, Jay technically is, so we ha- on the salaries page where it's listed, we have the funding included, and it's in that line that we have for reserve for salary negotiations. Assuming that Jay does not fill the role and someone else gets elected, we transfer the funding into the line.
Okay, so, the way it is right now, it's, it's zeroed out.
Correct, because he's the current moderator.
But he's not gonna be for twenty-
Well, at the time of the formulation of the budget in March, when we put it together.
All right. So the way it's approved right now, it's zeroed out.
Correct. We haven't made any changes to this budget in a couple of months.
Okay. So at seven o'clock, so at this point, I'm going to, um, I'm gonna open the public hearing for, um, for the budget. And what I'm gonna do is read through, um, the line. And then, um, suspend it. Does anybody who wants to stay on can stay on, but I'm gonna, uh, I'm gonna start reading through it now.
Mike?
Yeah.
Can you put that spreadsheet up on the screen?
Yes.
So that we can follow it? Because I don't have a copy in front of me.
How's that? You see it now?
That's beautiful. Perfect.
All right. So we'll start with, uh, Department one fourteen, moderator, uh, hundred dollars for expenses. One twenty-two, Selectmen, total is fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred. One thirty-one, Finance Committee, total is one thirty-six, nine thirteen. And again, this document is gonna be part of the record, um, with all of the detail. So I'm going to continue, um, just continue, continue down. Counting and payroll currently is, uh, zeroed out. One forty-one, Board of Assessors, ninety thousand, two seventy-one. One forty-five, Finance Department, two hundred seventeen thousand, three seventy-five. One fifty-one, Legal Counsel, eighty thousand dollars. One sixty-one, Town Clerk, sixty-nine thousand, nine twenty-one. One sixty-two, Elections and Registration, ten thousand, eight forty-six. Department one seventy-one, Conservation, thirty-five thousand, four twenty-three. One seventy-five, Planning Board, forty-three thousand, one ninety-seven. Department one seventy-six, Zoning Board, four thousand eight hundred twenty. One seventy-nine, Land Use Committee, two thousand five hundred fifty. One ninety-five, Town Reports, two thousand two hundred fifty. Uh, unpaid prior bills of a prior year, zero. We do have a separate article, um, to, to pay bills of a prior year. Um, one ninety, one ninety-nine, Town Hall Services, two hundred eighty-two thousand, one hundred seventy. Total General Government, one million, three hundred fifty-three thousand, two forty-five. Now if you move on to Public Safety, Police Department, one million, six hundred ninety-two thousand, forty-nine dollars. Department two twenty, uh, Fire Department, one million, one hundred twenty-nine thousand, nine sixty-two. Two forty-one, Building Inspector, fifty-six thousand, four forty-two. Two forty-two, Gas Inspector, seventy-three hundred dollars. Two forty-three, Plumbing Inspector, five thousand, seven hundred fifty. Two forty-four, Sealer of Weights and Measures, fifteen hundred dollars. Two forty-five, Electrical Inspector, fourteen thousand, five twenty-five. Two ninety-one, Emergency Management, four thousand six hundred fifty. Two ninety-two, Dog Officer, ten thousand, two sixty-five. Two ninety-four, Tree Warden, forty-nine thousand, one hundred. And two ninety-nine, Dispatching, a hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred. So total for Public Safety, three million, ninety-six thousand, forty-three dollars. Moving on to the schools, uh, three oh one, Mendon Upton Regional School District is ten million, six hundred thousand, eight hundred eighty-four. Vocation, uh, Blackstone Valley Vocational School is one million, eighty-four thousand, nine forty-two. Total for the schools, eleven million, six hundred eighty-five thousand, eight twenty-six. Public Works, four twenty-one, Road Machinery, sixty-five thousand, four ninety-eight. Um, four twenty-two, Highway Construction and Maintenance, six hundred sixty-seven thousand, one hundred seventy-three dollars. Four twenty-three, Snow and Ice Removal, a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. Uh, Department one, uh, four twenty-four, Streetlights, nineteen thousand, five hundred. Four fifty, Water Department, forty-six thousand, nine fifty-eight. Soldiers and Sailors Graves, Department four ninety-one, a hundred dollars. Total for Public Works, nine hundred ninety-three thousand, two twenty-nine. Then moving on to Public Welfare, Department five ten, Board of Health, five hundred forty-eight thousand, four seventy-five. Department five forty-one, Council on Aging, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight twenty-seven. Five forty-three, Veterans Benefits, thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred. Total Public Welfare, seven hundred sixteen thousand, one hundred and two dollars. On the Culture and Recreation, Department six ten, The Library, two hundred eighty-three thousand, five eighty-two. Department six thirty, Parks and Recreation, one hundred thousand, one ninety-seven. Department six ninety-one, Historical Commission, four thousand dollars. Four ninety-two, Special Events, four hundred dollars. Total Culture and Recreation, three hundred and eighty-eight, one seventy-nine. Now, just, just going through it, some of this is not operational, but, uh, Debt Service, uh, total retirement of debt principal and interest on long-term debt, two hundred and sixteen thousand, four ninety-five. So total debt service, seven hundred forty-six thousand, four ninety-five. Then if we go through Employee Benefits, which include Wester County Retirement at eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand, Workers' Compensation, twenty-four five, Unemployment Insurance, five hundred dollars, Health Insurance and Other Employee Benefits, uh, nine hundred and seventy-six thousand, five thirty. Long-term and short-term disability insurance, twenty-five thousand. Medicare, sixty-one thousand. Police and Fire Accident Insurance, um, twenty-eight thousand, five hundred. Property and Casualty Insurance, a hundred and ten thousand. So total benefits, two million, fifty-five thousand and thirty dollars. Uh, other special articles, um, include, uh, twenty-six thousand dollars, which is, it says, sixty-five hundred for the cyclical inspection program for assessing, update valuation for the assessors, which is sixty-five hundred and seventeen thousand. And then it, it's twenty-five hundred for police matching grants. And then looking here, we have other expenses, assessors overlay is a hundred and thirty-five thousand, local aid assessment, six thousand, fifty-seven, um, for one forty-one, fifty-seven for total of other expenses. Um, total, total of special articles and everything else and other, one hundred sixty-seven thousand, fifty-seven. And as you can see here, um, grand total of expenses for our budget, twenty-one million, two hundred and one thousand, two hundred and eight dollars. And that is the, uh, that's the balance amount. And that is the public hearing for our fiscal, uh, twenty-two budget. So at this point, uh, I guess I need, I'm gonna close the hearing. And, uh, Jean, I think we have, uh, meeting minutes that we need to approve?
Yes, we have, uh, April seventh. All right, hold on. Yeah. Am I muted?
Nope, I can hear you.
Oh, good. April seventh, which I sent out today.
Yes, I'm opening them, and let me, uh, let me share them. As soon as it opens up. So if we could look them over. Hopefully you guys had a chance to read them over. Can I have a motion to, uh, accept the minutes from last week?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the Finance Committee on, from Ap- April seventh, two thousand twenty-one.
Do I have a second?
Second, Jack.
Roll call, vote to accept them, please.
Mike, aye, yes.
Jack, aye.
Mike, aye.
And Norm, I, I can, I, I can read your lips, you said aye as well. And Norm, I I can, I I can read your lips, you said aye as well.
Norm, aye, sorry about that.
All right, um I think we're good.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
This is, it's Mark Reel, I just um, did you have to close your public hearing and ask for public comment?
Um I did close it. I did not, you're right, I I did close it. I didn't have any public comments, but I will at this point ask if there's anybody. Who has any public comments or questions about the budget that they'd like answered? Going once? Going twice? So at this point, the the public hearing remains closed. Does anybody on the FinCom have any other business? Then what I would, what I would say is there's going to be a virtual town meeting run-through on May fifth. It will get publicized, as you know, uh May eighth is um. Rather than having the town meeting on Friday night, May seventh, it's gonna be on the field behind the Misco School on uh. Saturday morning, May eighth, which is my birthday. And um so we'll all show up. For the hearing, and also, obviously, there is going to be the um. The override question that will be both at the town meeting and then um after the emergency meeting. That the uh Selectman had, and you all approved that article, that question, that's also going to be on the ballot. Um along with uh with all of the town uh elections, and that would be on May. May Tuesday, May eighteenth. So we'll have the town meeting on May eighth, and then uh ten days later will be the town election. Which will decide the override vote and then all the other open seats, all the other seats on the ballot. So with all that, can I have uh, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, Jack.
All those in favor?
Aye, Jack.
Mike, aye.
Nick, aye.
Norm, aye.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks.
All right.